We're waiting on Bennett, Dave. Not yet, we're waiting on the lawyer giving the presentation on the wireless ordinance to be on, so.
Matt just gave me the thumbs up, so now don't start yet.
Let me.
Matt is an authoritative figure.
He says go.
Did he just get on?
To order, stand for pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Here.
The mics are sensitive. Commissioner Correll.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith. Commissioner Saye.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Sterling.
Here.
We have all here, Scott. Tonight, we will be proclaiming our outgoing commissioners, recognizing them for a job well done. Vice Chairman Smith, would you like to start?
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Bart Glass for his years of service as Planning Commissioner. Whereas Bart Glass was appointed to the City of Avalon Planning Commission in 2015, where he served as an alternate and appointed as a Planning Commissioner in June of 2016. And whereas while on the Planning Commission, Bart served as Acting Chairman in 2021 and Vice Chairman from 2022 to 2024. And whereas during his time as Commissioner, Bart was instrumental in the development process of Vons, which brought better infrastructure for our community grocery shopping. And whereas Bart's commitment to ensuring a promising future of the community coupled with hard work, the patience to listen, and the willingness and ability to make decisions has truly shown over the years. And whereas every day, residents of Avalon and people throughout the city directly benefit from the dedication and commitment Bart has made to Avalon. Now, therefore, the City Council and the citizens of the City of Avalon extend their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Commissioner Glass for his contributions to the community and dedication to the continual improvement of the City of Avalon dated this September Day of July 2024.
Thank you. Commissioner Saye.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Sandy Putnam for her years of service as Planning Commissioner. Whereas Sandy Putnam was appointed to the Avalon City Planning Commission in 2016, where she has served as Commissioner for the past eight years. And whereas while on the Planning Commission, Sandy was instrumental in creating the most recent sign ordinance for the City of Avalon, making sure businesses are treated fairly. And whereas during her time as Commissioner, Sandy was dedicated to the Vons project. She understood what the community wanted and needed in order for the development to be most beneficial to everyone. And whereas Commissioner Putnam was a dedicated individual who took the well-being of this town seriously during her years of service. And whereas residents of Avalon and people throughout the city directly benefit from the dedication and commitment Sandy has made to Avalon. Now, therefore, the City Council and the citizens of the City of Avalon extend their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Commissioner Putnam for her contributions to the community and commitment to the continual improvement of the City of Avalon dated this 17th Day of July 2024. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. Commissioner Romero.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Armida Ruth for her years of service as Alternate Planning Commissioner. Whereas Armida Ruth was appointed to the Avalon City Planning Commission in 2022. Whereas she served as Alternate Commissioner for the past two years. And whereas while on Planning Commission, Armida committed to attending every meeting in case she was called upon to help make decisions. And whereas Armida promoted equality and treated all people, projects, and perspectives equally. And whereas Armida Ruth's commitment to the residents of Avalon and people throughout the city is something we commend. Now, therefore, the City Council and the citizens of Avalon extend their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Alternate Commissioner Ruth for her contributions to the community and commitment to the continual improvement of City of Avalon dated this 17th Day of July 2024.
Thank you.
Oral communication, this is the time when any member of the audience can come up and speak on something that's not on the agenda tonight, and no action will be taken. Anybody? Then we move on to the consent calendar. We have the minutes from last meeting. Can anyone make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Okay, please use the monitors in front of you.
Onto the public hearing, or reading of our first public hearing?
We have six I's, Scott, and one abstain.
Yeah. Going to go reading the public hearing?
Yes, so I'm going to go ahead and introduce Bennett Givens from BBK. He is here tonight to provide you the staff report for the public hearing in consideration of a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 9-7, Article 10 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding the installation and operation of antennas and wireless facilities on public and private property outside of the public right-of-way. So I think just as a brief introduction, you kind of got an initial briefing on this a few months ago when we began working on this ordinance. And so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Bennett, so he can kind of give you the summary of where we ended up and what we would like your input on today.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us back. We last spoke a few months ago to discuss the city's authority with regard to regulating wireless facilities. Since that time, we've worked with city staff to develop the proposed ordinance that is up for discussion this evening. I prepared a short PowerPoint to go through and provide a general overview of the city's wireless authority and also provide some high-level overview of the proposed ordinance. So without further ado. Let's see.
I'll have to forward your slides for you, Bennett.
No problem. All right, next slide, please. So this is our high-level, all-in-one slide that provides an update and discussion of how federal law treats wireless facilities with regard to local authority to regulate them. Generally, no local decision or regulation can prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless service or telecommunications services. In addition, the Federal Communications Commission, or the FCC, has sole authority to set the RF emissions safety standards. And local governments are prohibited from regulating the placement of wireless facilities based on RF emissions, except to the extent that the applicant has shown that has complied with FCC standards. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 requires that local governments act on an application for a wireless facility within a reasonable period of time. These are, the FCC has created, interpreted that requirement and has set forth a number of shot clocks that range from 60 to 150 days. The all denials of wireless applications need to be in writing and based on substantial evidence on the record. And denials need to be provided to the applicant as soon as practicable after the decision has been made. Local governments are prohibited from unreasonably discriminating among providers of functionally equivalent services. This is a particular protection for the wireless industry. You'd have to, local governments have to treat them the same as other utilities and other similar infrastructure providers and operators. The wireless industry is also afforded expedited appeals to go to court essentially to overturn or challenge a decision of a local government. And there's also certain modifications to an existing wireless facility, these are known as eligible facilities requests, that if they qualify, the city has no discretion and must approve. Next slide, please. This slide provides a general legal framework for the main federal acts that all telecommunications law is based on. The largest sea change was in 1996, the adoption of the Telecommunications Act. There are two main sections of that act that relate to local authority, there's Section 332 and Section 253 of that act that sets forth requirements for local governments and prohibits state and local governments from taking actions or setting forth regulations that prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of any entity to provide personal wireless services or telecommunications services. Later, in 2012, we had the adoption of the Middle Class Tax and Relief Act. Section 6409 of that act established what we now call eligible facilities requests. These are those modifications which if they do qualify, the city has no discretion and must approve. And last but certainly not least, we have a number of FCC regulations, orders, declaratory rulings, and regulations interpreting the federal statutes that carry the force and effect of law. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the FCC shot clocks for action. These range from 60 days to 150 days based on the type of wireless facility or application that's being sought. Generally, what we've seen more recently is most of the applications that we've reviewed recently have generally been on the shorter shot clock level. Generally, those subject to 60-day shot clocks. And then you have longer shot clocks from 90 and 150 days for larger facilities or more complex additions to existing structures. The other thing to keep in mind as well is the addition of deemed approved remedies if you miss the shot clock. There's only one deemed approved remedy under federal law, and that's for eligible facilities requests. Our state legislature has stepped in and added deemed approved remedies for all other wireless application types. So currently, if the city misses a shot clock, the applicant need only provide a notice to the city that the shot clock has been missed and their application is deemed approved. And the applicant can go and commence constructing that facility or making that modification that they had applied for. Next slide, please. A hot topic in wireless siting is RF emissions and how to regulate that. As I mentioned earlier, the Telecommunication Act limits the extent to which local governments can regulate RF emissions and sets the FCC as the sole arbiter of RF emissions safety standards. And they've been directed to prescribe and make effective rules regarding the environmental effects of our radio frequency emissions. Next slide, please. Opponents to wireless facilities make a number of similar arguments that we've seen across the country, and the next couple of slides kind of discuss some typical arguments and responses based on recent case law. Often, there are concerns or about the wireless, the perceived health effects of RF emissions. Direct or indirect concerns over the perceived health effects of RF emissions may not serve as substantial evidence to support the denial of an application where an applicant has demonstrated that they are in compliance with the FCC standards. In addition, we often see claims that a proposed wireless facility will result in diminished property values, where those concerns are actually rooted in the negative perceived effects of RF emissions. Those concerns about diminished property values cannot constitute substantial evidence supporting a denial of a wireless application. Next slide, please. Finally, we do often hear arguments that RF emissions or hypersensitivity to RF emissions requires accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act or Fair Housing Act. Recent case law has made clear that hypersensitivity to RF emissions does not require accommodation under the ADA or FHA. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there are certain modifications to an existing wireless facility that if they qualify, the city has no discretion and must approve. These are modifications to an existing wireless facility that involve the co-location of new equipment, so adding new antennas or even a new cell site to an existing site. So for instance, you have a wireless facility that has a tower, has T-Mobile on it, if Verizon sought to be added to that tower and add their equipment, that could be, that would be the co-location of new transmission equipment, adding new equipment on, or even adding or substituting new wireless equipment by the same carrier, the removal of transmission equipment, or the replacement of transmission equipment. As I mentioned, if that qualifies as an eligible facilities request, the city may not deny and shall approve. That's actually the excerpt from the Middle Class Tax and Relief Act. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to discuss and provide a general overview of the wireless ordinance update that we've prepared with staff for the last month or two. First, we, the two, there are two main sources of requirements for wireless facilities in the city code. After the adoption of the Small Cell Order in 2018, a number of local jurisdictions jumped into action to establish regulations for small wireless facilities that were most likely to be deployed in the public right-of-way. The city was one of those and jumped in and established an article in your Streets and Highway Code chapter for addressing wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. However, the city has not updated its wireless regulations for facilities outside of the public right-of-way since 1997. The ordinance in 1997 was, appears to be adopted as a result of the adoption of the Telecommunications Act in 1996. And in completing our update, one of the few main items that we're looking at is trying to streamline the city's process to meet those shorter shot clock timelines of 60 days and to avoid those deemed approved remedies. We've also updated the standards and design requirements for wireless facilities to account for changes in the law and updates to the industry broadly. Next slide, please. So in terms of applicability, this Article 10 will replace the existing Article 10, and it will apply to all antennas and wireless facilities on private and public property located outside of the public right-of-way. There are a number of exceptions to Article 10 for certain specified facilities. These are fairly common exceptions that we've seen across the state. Just because an antenna type is exempt from Article 10 does not make it exempt from the zoning code in general or other requirements of the code, it's just exempt from this Article 10 and its requirements. We have over-the-air reception devices, also known as OTARs, also known as satellite dishes more commonly, TV broadcast antennas, amateur radio antennas. Those three items are subject to broad federal preemption on the number and type of regulation you can impose. And most jurisdictions typically exempt them from their general wireless facilities chapter. In addition, we have exemptions for public safety facilities owned and operated by government agencies. Certain temporary facilities that are installed in during a declared emergency, or if they're used less than seven days, often for wireless site upgrades. Wireless carrier might need to erect a temporary facility to continue operation and provide coverage while they're completing upgrades to an existing site. They'll then power down that temporary site, bring up their more permanent site, and that can use, this exemption would facilitate those types of short-term temporary facilities. In addition, we've also exempted distributed antenna systems, these are known as DAS. If you've, these are most often employed, deployed in large buildings or stadiums. If you've gone to a concert venue or a mall or any other large building or structure and have had pretty good cell service, it's very likely, fairly likely that you were utilizing a distributed antenna system. Next slide, please. We've split up the review of wireless applications into three permit types. So for 60-day, for wireless applications subject to the shortest shot clock at 60 days, we have created a new permit type known as an administrative wireless permit. It's reviewed by the planning director, there is no public hearing, and the applicant is authorized to appeal a decision of the planning director to the planning commission. These apply to the 60-day shot clock types, so for eligible facilities requests, so those modifications are, the city has no discretion if they comply. Government code co-location facilities, this is a more antiquated government code section. Generally, if a wireless facility received a certain level of environmental review and a carrier wants to modify it or add a new site, they can do so under that government code. We found in practice that that section's fairly, does not utilize very often due to the adoption of the Middle Class Tax and Relief Act and the eligible facilities request process, which is much easier frankly for the industry. And also, last but not least, is small wireless facilities on existing structures. Those are all subject to the 60-day shot clock. Next, for wireless applications, oh, sorry, one slide back, please. And then the second type, permit type we have for 90-day shot clock facilities are site plan review, which is reviewed by the planning commission. This will utilize your typical site plan review process that you are all, I'm sure, very comfortable with and have utilized in the past. We have updated and provided specific findings of approval for wireless facilities and then essentially piggybacked on the city's existing site plan review process. So you'll be familiar with how that will work and continue to utilize that same process. And last, we have a conditional use permit and site plan review requirement, both by the planning commission, for those other types of wireless facilities subject to the longest 150-day shot clock. Next slide now. Thank you. We've updated application submittal requirements and provided authority for the planning director to establish and update from time to time a wireless application form. We're currently working with staff to develop that form and we'll have that ready. Also, we've updated and provided wireless-specific findings of approval. We've set forth a standard list of conditions of approval. These would attach to all wireless facility approvals, even if that wireless approval is by operation of law due to a deemed approved remedy. There are specific rules for eligible facilities requests, there are federal law limits, what kinds of conditions of approval you can apply, and the ordinance carries that requirement through. And we've also created a limited exception process for design, development, and location standards. An applicant at the time of submittal can submit a request for a limited exception to the city's design, development, and location standards. And they have to make a good adequate showing that strict adherence to the city's standards would prohibit or effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless services, otherwise violate applicable law, or require technically infeasible designs, or only involve minor noncompliance, that such noncompliance results in almost no harm. This is a great safety valve that we've started deploying in many of our recent wireless ordinance updates across the state, essentially allows the city to forecast a wireless industry applicant's potential arguments should a litigation fall out from an application that we can essentially understand where they're going to argue before a suit is filed and act accordingly. Next slide, please. In terms of those location, design, and development standards, we have established a number of requirements on aesthetics, landscaping, setbacks, lightings, among many other topics. We generally require that all wireless facilities need to incorporate stealth components and concealment and ensure that they're designed to be the least visible means possible. We've also set forth location standards with preferred deployment in commercial, special commercial, resort, recreation, and public zones. We've also prohibited wireless facility deployment in floodplains, sensitive species areas, and on any parcel within a residential zone. I believe the zoning map was included in your packet, so you can see how we've tried to establish those location standards and how they'll actually impact once applied. In terms of height and setbacks, wireless facilities will be subject to the height and setbacks of the underlying zone. If there's no applicable height restriction in the underlying zone, the wireless facility would be subject to a 50-foot height limit. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation, so I'll be available to answer questions. I don't know if staff has anything else to add on the ordinance or anything else.
Thanks, Bennett. So all I would add is, you know, in the discussions that we had with BBK regarding kind of where would be an appropriate place to allow a wireless facility. I mean, obviously, we want to be sensitive not only to the residents of the community, but also, I mean, there's, Avalon is a unique community with some really unique kind of aesthetic considerations, which are echoed in the city's not only general plan, but also the local coastal program in terms of protection for sensitive areas, environmentally sensitive areas, places with scenic view sheds, things of that nature. So that was kind of what drove the discussion that we had internally about where we would recommend facilities be allowed. One thing I'm sure, you know, he's, as he mentioned, you know, focusing on commercial zones and then not, and prohibiting facilities in residential zones. Something that we did consider was, you know, would it be appropriate to have a setback from- from, rather than a prohibition on a zone, a setback based on perhaps residential uses? But really, there's no zone in the city that doesn't allow residential uses. Even in our commercial zones, as you know, we have residences. So I don't know that there's anywhere in the city that you're more than 50 feet, 50 or 100 feet away from where somebody lives or can live. So that's why we really focused on a zoning district-level allowance or prohibition versus like a use-based prohibition, because that's really, we're so tightly packed here, it would be really hard to justify that kind of regulation to the state and the federal government, since we're not allowed to effectively prohibit wireless, which I think if we tried to do a setback requirement, we would more or less be doing that, whether we meant to or not. But, yeah, so that's all I wanted to clarify, but Bennett and I are here for any questions you guys might have.
I have one question. The final page of the staff report refers to a map, Bennett, and it excludes Hamilton Cove.
So, yeah, that's just not intentional.
Well, so, the reason I bring it up, there is a cell tower at Hamilton Cove.
Correct. And the ordinance would not require the removal of a facility that's already been permitted. Currently permitted, legally permitted facilities are also allowed to, and Bennett can correct me, you're allowed to do eligible facilities requests and colocations, so that is not something that the city ordinance would preempt. But, yeah, you're right, Hamilton Cove is considered, is a residentially zoned development, so there would be no, based on the recommendations from staff, there would be no ability to have any completely new facilities built in Hamilton Cove in the future, but the existing facility would be considered legally nonconforming and allowed to continue to be there.
Thank you.
Anyone like to speak on behalf of this matter? Any other discussion before we, someone makes a motion?
So, Vice Chair, I just wanted to clarify for the planning commission that what we are looking for this evening is a recommendation to City Council. So you would not be the final decision-makers in the matter tonight, but we'd like your recommendation and comments to forward to them.
Well, going through all this information that has been given to us in the past and today, it sounds like we don't have any kind of wiggle room at all. It's pretty much, they can come in here and, from wherever they choose, to an extent. It says, and a lot of it, that we can't deny anything, we have to approve. Now, do they, they have to go to the Coastal Commission?
We're all pretty limited on what we can do. Federal preemption on this, and Bennett laid out, you know, what authority cities do have, and it's limited, no question.
Yeah, so part of the understanding that, and hearing the feedback we got from you the, you know, last time we came here to discuss this matter, we really did try to maximize the things we are allowed to provide regulation for, so that's in terms of preferred locations for facilities, you know, prohibiting residential, setting forth design standards that are going to require, you know, stealthing of facilities and concealment, because obviously that's, can be a really big deal. And then, you know, even in those design standards, you know, for things like landscaping, making sure that that's a, you know, native first landscaping, we don't want, we don't need any additional invasive plants. Yeah, so the things that we could provide, you know, stringent guidelines, and of course, you know, in terms of standard conditions of approval, making sure that we're providing things that are as detailed as possible. So, and even the application that we're working on with BPK is, it's got a pretty long list of things that you have to provide as part of your application to be detailed. So we really want to make sure we're getting as much information as possible if we get requests. And, to be fair, the city doesn't get a lot of wireless facilities requests. I think it's been some time since we've, we've had a request to remove a facility, but no new facilities in a while, I think.
So this is just getting us up into compliance?
That's the goal.
Pretty much. Yes.
Yeah, get into compliance with current federal, state regulations, and then also make it clear for people who do come in, who want to propose a facility, what the city's expectations are.
That's what we're recommending if we approve this, or if we...
Yeah, so the, what we're looking for in terms of a motion is whether you would like to recommend the ordinance that we have proposed to council, or would you like to recommend it with maybe some additional conditions or recommended language that you would like to see?
I'll make a motion that we follow staff recommendation, as highlighted on page seven, and send this to City Council for an approval. If they add a couple more spots and we have a few less dead zone, that'd be awesome. I don't expect that to happen. It's kind of the charm of being here, but it looks like this covers our bases.
Thank you, staff and Bennett, for all your hard work. I will second your motion.
Vote?
Okay.
All right, we have all eyes, Scott.
All right, thank you very much, Bennett.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll talk soon.
Onto public hearing number two. We have a reading for the Catalina Island Horseback Adventures.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So the second item on the agenda for you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit, site plan, and coastal development permit to allow a horse stable facility for Catalina Island Horseback Adventures LLC in the resort recreation zone. The existing site is located on a much larger parcel, under ownership of the Santa Catalina Island Company. That parcel is inclusive of the existing Catalina Golf Course. Y'all are pretty, probably pretty familiar with this property, and this is a site that was previously developed with a horse stable that operated up until 2008, before that ceased operation and the facilities were, the facility was removed from the property. The previous stables did not have any approvals from the city in terms of entitlements. It was originally operating many decades before that, and so essentially had been established before the city put any requirements in place for a use permit. In terms of area context, you said you're more familiar with the property than I am, probably. It is located south of the city hall, it is also adjacent to the Avalon School, and then surrounded on other sides by the golf course. So at this time, the applicant is proposing to lease approximately 2.6 acres from the island company to reestablish the stable property. They would, the operation would consist of guided trail rides, horsemanship demonstrations, and equestrian education activities. Trail rides would be provided on the one-hour trail or the horse trail, and as part of that, the applicant is going to assume responsibility for maintenance of that trail in coordination with the island company and the conservancy. Proposed hours of operation would be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily, with extended hours during the summer season for guided sunset trail rides. The project is broken up into two phases, and that's really driven largely by the water allocation for this project. So currently, they have a allocation that has been issued by Southern California Edison that would allow them to essentially re-renovate the existing home on the property to create it as a one-bedroom. So it's currently a three-bedroom home, it would be reduced to a one-bedroom home and office. They could have up to 16 horses on the property, and then they would also construct a number of ancillary facilities as well, including temporary bathrooms, storage containers, and also a kind of a parking entry area. Phase two of the project, once additional water allocation is issued, would allow for the construction of a 2,400-square-foot barn, a construction of, you know, kind of plumbed permanent restroom facilities, and then the acquisition of additional horses. So the applicant has kind of provided their business plan, there's a site plan, an information included, that was included for your review as part of the packet. Staff, to just go over it briefly, you know, identified three issue items that we just kind of wanted to bring to your attention and let you know how that they've been conditioned as part of the project. So one of them has to do with the existing drainage channel in the property. So I think you're all aware, there's a drainage channel that runs through this particular site, and actually ultimately ends up draining into Avalon Bay. The city is obligated to ensure that there's no contamination of the bay that comes through that drainage, and is actually already subject to regular testing to ensure that we're up to health and safety standards for that drainage. Public Works has requested that the applicant prepare a water quality management plan in order to address, you know, how they're going to make sure that the drainage stays clear of manure, hay, other kinds of debris that might get into that channel and be washed into the bay in a stormwater situation. They've already hired an engineer to start preparing that plan, they have had discussions with Bob Greenlaw and Public Works, and so we have conditioned, that is one of the conditions of approval, that prior to occupancy of the property with horses, they would need to have that water quality management plan approved and in place. Issue item number two would be manure disposal. So obviously, with animals comes potential odorous nuisances, we'll say. So that was one of the initial questions that we had for them when they originally went to come back in. The applicant has given a pretty detailed, or a relatively detailed description of what they'd like to do, but essentially, what they, what their plan to do is that Middle Ranch already has an existing composting operation that they would essentially join in on. So rather than any of the manure getting sent over to the city landfill, which as we all know has capacity, you know, very limited capacity for any new streams of waste at this time, they will essentially have a, you know, have an onsite collection plan, and then regular transportation of that up to Middle Ranch to be composted. We have asked for them to create a more former, formal and detailed disposal plan that will also need to be approved by the city prior to them occupying the property, just so we can formalize what our expectations are, and if things need to change in the future, we can all be on the same page, so there aren't any surprises. Issue item number three was a safety and evacuation plan. So obviously, sometimes, unfortunately, there could be the potential for a natural disaster, whether that's fire, flood, or other, other types of events. So the applicant has already submitted a draft evacuation and safety plan. Where would horses go? What would the triggers be during certain types of events to require certain action? It's already under review by staff and mostly complete, but the applicant needed to, essentially can't finalize that plan until they know sort of what the plan, the city's, you know, approval would look like in any additional conditions. So, again, prior to occupancy of the site, that evacuation and safety plan would need to be approved by Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Planning and Building Department. Again, staff has already looked at the draft plan and is, minor comments at this point, but obviously, we want to dial that in before we move forward. I have prepared kind of a detailed recommendation for you regarding the findings for the conditional use permit, site plan review, and coastal development permit. Overall, staff thinks that the project can be approved based with the conditions that are recommended in the resolution. I am here to answer any questions you might have. The applicant is also here this evening, and I believe has brought some friends with them as well, who might be able to answer any questions for you as well. Thank you.
I just had a question, well, two questions. So, in the site plan and in this description of phase one, it says, "two 50-foot dimension, diameter round pens," and shows those here, and then it just says, "a 60-round pen pipe corral." Is that a different one in the, where you have all the questions? Number question 12, they answered like what they're doing, and it said 60-foot pens. So I just didn't know if that was a typo, or are they, is that an additional one?
So...
So in phase one, and in the site plan, it lists that there's two 50-foot round, and then in question 12, when they sort of tell you what they're going to do and put on the site, it says 60-foot round pen pipe corral. Just something I noticed that was...
Sure. So I think we should defer to the applicant, we'll have them clarify, but we wrote it based on the site plan. Staff's analysis was based on the site plan with the two 50-foot pens.
Okay, well, all right. The other thing is, I read somewhere that they won't be walking on... Canyon, you wrote, you went on the road. How are they not going to run it on the road? I'm just wondering.
Sure, so in the staff application, they have a diagram called horseback trail, and so they are kind of showing the hour trail kind of going south, and then it loops back, also still on private property.
I think hole seven coming up, and then going up the side of the hill to the, to back up to the trail.
Yeah, so I think what happened during the Grand Prix we had here, we redid the, we redid the road for the Grand Prix, and I think, what it looked like to me is what they're using that road that we cut out for the Grand Prix in 2010. It's behind, it's behind...
They added a bunch of, we had a half-hour trail, an hour, 45 minutes. There's ways to get around the hour and back up and not have to go through the straight.
So during the motorcycle race they had here, they cut a new road. It was kind of an old, old road, but they redid it, but I think that's what they're using it, what it looked like to me.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was also one of our initial questions, because obviously cleanup in the public right-of-way or interaction of animals and traffic would be something weird.
I was worried about the horses and the golf carts.
Yes, obviously, different transportation modes, so our understanding, and the applicant, I'm sure, can speak to it more than us, is that the animals will be not in the public right-of-way.
So I have a question for you on item number two that the staff recommends. You're talking disposal, are you talking disposal of the manure? Okay. And so, would he mitigate it with the compost that they were talking about? Does that suffice, or...
Yeah.
Are you saying that, so I was confused, you were saying it's a condition, but in here, it says that they're going to do the compost, so...
Yes, so their applicant, their proposal is to have all of the manure taken up to Middle Ranch for composting, and a condition of approval, a condition of approval we have put in place is they need to formalize that plan for us...
Okay.
...in writing with all of those details, so that the city knows exactly what the plan is in terms of frequency, who's going to be picking it up, so that we don't create any smell or fly, pest issues.
Open the public hearing. Anyone like to come up and address? Yeah. Amen, your address?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Skelton, 5367th Place, Long Beach, California. I am the principal owner of Catalina and Horseback Adventures, and happy to be here, joined with my fiancee and some great friends and partners of ours. Thank you for your consideration for this. This has been a fun adventure over the last year and a half, and hear all the great stories. I remember the first time that I heard that the famous quote, "The best way to see the island is on the back of a horse." And after nearly 10 years of riding here with Los Caballeros, I absolutely agree. And it's not only just a great place to ride with the views and the experience you can have here, but there's a long history of horses here. And for a long time, I just kept saying, "Somebody should bring the horses back." And finally, I just decided, I guess maybe it's me. And I will tell you, it's been fun over the last year and a half to hear all the stories of the people here on the island, talking about growing up, and going to the stables, and being around the horses, and that's really the special part of the horses, is not the rides. It's seeing the smiles and the joy that it brings to people, and whenever we're out riding on the trails, that's what happens. We come across folks, and they all want a picture with the horse, and they want to just pet it, and the horse is an amazing animal, and what it does for the human being and the connection that we have with it. And that's really been a passion project for me, bringing this back, to be able to bring it back to the island, bring it back to the people of Avalon, to be able to continue to have that experience. And we are humbly aware of the responsibility that comes with, with doing this, and understand that it has to not only be done, but done right, and to not only create a safe experience, but a very memorable experience for everybody that comes to the island. As, as we say, we're always looking to create that postcard shot, that reason that gives somebody the ability to take that picture that becomes their Christmas card. And I know, because, you know, it's, it's on the back of my business card, and it was my Christmas card, it is my thank-you card, it's that picture that I took up at Blackjack at Sunset, and, you know, we want to create the experience that allows everybody to be able to do that. So I thank you for your consideration, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Are we waiting on a question?
Do you have any plans to expand riding out in the interior, like past the city limits?
So, you're asking my aspirational plans? Absolutely. I think there's so much more. What we're focused on right now is, you know, what we're doing, which is creating this, getting it to be successful. I can tell you, we've had very productive conversations with other folks on the island. I will tell you that the island company has been so supportive of this, and so I think there's some more opportunities there. But what we're focused on now is doing this, but I foresee in the future that there could definitely be some opportunities created, whether it be for the scout camps, those different things. I think there could be opportunities, but I don't want to get ahead of it. We've got to do this and do it right first.
Is it strictly just as a business? I know before, they used to have people that would house horses there as individuals.
Yeah.
So are you, is that something that you're open to too? Like, say, I want to buy a horse and have a place to keep it and pay you to take care of it?
Not, not currently. That, that's not anywhere in our plans. For a couple of things, one is, it changes the business model completely when you start taking in other people's horses. The other thing I'll share with you is when you look at the way things like fly control and things like that, and the way we feed horses, the only way those things are really successful, if there's 100% of, so all of the horses are on the same program that prevents fly larvae. And so if somebody brings another horse and says, I don't want to feed that to my horse, you begin to lose that. So we really want to create a controlled environment, and so we, at this point, have no intention of having other horses there. Yeah. It's a great question, though. And I get asked that quite a bit. Everybody wants to bring their horses back here.
I just wanted to make a comment. Is, maybe, I'm not sure, but is there going to be any kind of, anything specific for the schoolchildren here?
We'll definitely...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely do programs. I mean, we, we look at, obviously, we want to create something for the visitors, but we also understand, we want to do quite a bit for the local folks that live here. And so there will be school programs. A big part of what we do, if you look into the plan, it's not only doing guided trail rides, it's having, it's creating something, if you just want to come over and sit and watch us train a horse in the round pen, or doing guided programs, or going out to the schools. We've also created a nonprofit where we'll have a nonprofit element to make sure if there's underprivileged kids or people that otherwise would not be able to afford it, we want to be able to create that environment as well.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they'll be able to get more water. 16 head of horses and not a lot of horses.
It seems low for how much work you're going to have to do.
It's very low, so we had, we had a choice that we could wait until sometime in 2025, or we could figure it out and make it work with what we've got.
I know, like during, we had the water, is there something, if you wanted to ship your own water over? Like, I know during, we had the big drought here, some people brought their own water over every day.
Hopefully, they'll be able to find water. We ran 50 to 70 head of horses up there back in the day.
Yeah.
16s back then.
To me, it seems really, really low.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll get to that.
It's what we've got now, and I will tell you, the folks at Southern California Edison have been very cooperative, very helping us get there, and I'm hoping it's going to be not very far down the line, that we, we've already submitted for phase two, and so I anticipate that's going to come quicker than we would expect. Never as quick as we hope, but quicker we accept. And I think, I think by next summer, we should be able to be running full capacity.
I see, like, as a business thing, it doesn't seem feasible for 16 and how many people you're going to have to have, and, because like, I, like I said, I've lived here my whole life. I just always remember, there's more than 16 horses, you know?
As, as we know, for me and my fiancee, the next year is going to be very lean years for us, but we'll find a way to make it work.
We need water.
Yeah.
Okay.
How do you see the trail interacting with the golf course and the walkers?
Great question. So there's a couple elements to that. One is, it is a shared use trail, but that's pretty common. Almost every trail we've ever ridden over town, everywhere we go, every weekend, we share. It's really interesting, and that's part of what lends the passion, is because the amount of pictures we take when we come across kids and we see the smiles and people want to talk about the horses. So that's pretty common, not an issue. Where it's really going to be a benefit to the other users is where, from time to time, those trails begin to get washed out or become overgrown, we're very happy to take the lead on trail maintenance. And so a lot of those trails are going to be widened, they're going to be cleaned up, and it's going to be a much, what we hope is a much better trail for folks on a, on a regular basis, because obviously, what's really important to us is create a safe experience for our riders and our horses. So those trails have to be really well-maintained. So we think that's going to be a benefit to everybody that uses those trails. With respect to the golf course, which is always a question that comes up, it's important to remember that these are guided trail rides. These are not just people randomly at any given time going out. So, you know, two to three times a day, which we'll know, it might be at 10:00 AM and at 2:00 PM, this group is going out with a, with a guide, and that guide will be trained and understand how to know when is the appropriate time and the golf, you know, whoever's waiting to tee off will know. So it will, we see this all the time as well. I mean, whether it's we're waiting at crosswalks or red lights and, or stop signs, I mean, horsemen know. It's just a matter of being aware, but we're going to have these all guided by our team. So we don't anticipate that being a challenge at all. Yeah. Any other questions?
Is there any room for, like, volunteers? Like, I'm just imagining some, maybe there's some students who are like, kind of heading down the wrong road, and I would see, I would assume that being around a horse could really turn someone's path another way. Just, I'm wondering if there's room for, like, volunteer, or just someone who kind of wants to be around a horse?
Yeah, we really want to work at that. My, my fiancee have talked about that, about the responsibility that comes here in the community and taking that, call it that cowboy culture, if you will, of respect and perseverance and all those things that come with it. We understand that responsibility, and yes, we, we would love to get to the point where those programs are, and we want to always keep it open and encourage kids to come down, because I think there's a lot to be learned from being around the horse. And so we certainly want to encourage that, and we're going to do the best we can to create those opportunities for the local kids. Absolutely. Which is why I think eventually, you know, even going to the, to the different camps here on the island, I think there's a place, there's a place for the horse there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, anybody else?
Yeah, I wasn't quick enough. Thank you. I'm Jeff Stevens.
Name and address, please.
Jeff Stevens, just currently reside in Newport Beach, 2307 16th Street, Director of Planning with the Island Company with Facilities Design and Development. And I just want to say, I've had the pleasure of working with Jeff on this for the last year. We've thrown a lot of obstacles at him and told him all the things he can't do, and every time, he just smiled and said, okay, then we'll do this, then we'll do this. He's very committed, very experienced, been very impressed with his passion and his care for the community. And also want to thank planning staff and Edison for helping us tailor this project to fit in a very tight water restriction. So I, there's a lot of questions about the number of horses. That's entirely, you know, unfortunately, horses drink water. So we're at 16 right now, but as you know, Jeff would like to add 30 more, and we've already applied to be on the waitlist for the additional horses and flush toilets, which at this phase one, it's, it's portable. So he's got a very clear vision, and I've just been very impressed with Jeff's experience and his passion and his team, and thank you for your time.
House like to speak? Put your name and address, please.
Hello, yeah, hi. I'm Jesse Trillo. I just, so yes, I, I use 118 Metropole Avenue as the address. I'm Jesse Trillo. So I've worked with a couple of ranches out in Illinois. I worked with 20 show horses at one point, and five of them over here in Malibu. I'm glad to hear and be present where, where the proposal of a new ranch is going to be developed. I really hope this happens and it gets approved. I, like I do, I'm a visitor from the other side in LA, but, but to hear this happening again and having the horses be here, that sounds amazing. So I just wanted to express that, and maybe hopefully be aboard of maybe a behind-the-ranch scenes and, you know, picking up manure or something. So we'll see. But it sounds like a great idea, so I hope it gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Any other discussion or a motion or...
Yes, I'll entertain a motion. I want to thank Jeff for his enthusiasm and the island company's efforts in working together to bring this back. This is something that's, you know, been missing from Avalon for a while here, so thumbs up on that. So I'll make a motion to approve this application with staff recommendations, and good luck, gentlemen. I hope you build it, and I hope you get your new water soon.
Second.
Call for a vote? Oh, I keep forgetting. We have all eyes. Scott? Any other... It's passed, in case she didn't hear that.
Congratulations.
Any other commission business?
The only thing I just wanted to put on your radar is probably, thank you for your efforts on reviewing the wireless ordinance this evening. It will not be the last ordinance you will see this year. So coming in the next few months, we'll also be bringing forward a comprehensive housing ordinance package to really get the city, again, deal with all, kind of incorporating all of the state law changes from last year, as well as just trying to tighten up some of our other regulations. So you'll be seeing that soon, but I don't have a date yet, but coming soon.
Most, they always say, good night, Tony. I don't know why.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Thank you.